Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the lots meeting in 2023 for the Hyatt Burt planning room. Please make note of the exits around the room and notice some changes. You can see how all this business in some of these walls were cleaned. We have some clauses taken off. It's all the cause of a better town hall shortly. In the meantime, please join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd like to just do a quick housekeeping note to thank our staff in the planning and zoning offices for a terrific year. We've seen lots and lots and lots of development and you've kept up with 99% of it. So, thank you, Ted. Thank you, Cynthia. Thank everybody in the offices. And to thank our consultants once again, who I'm happy to say will all be rejoining us next year. So, thank you all for your work as well.
Thank you.
Yay.
Thank you. Couldn't do it without you.
So true. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for the CIA Hotel and Villas. This is for site plan approval of a temporary pre-sales trailer to be located on the south side of the Marichika. Make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you and thank you, John, for leaping into Chris's position.
Yes, all right. Appreciate that.
In his absence. Want to come up and present? There's not much to present, I know, but for the viewing public, this was circulated already to county planning because it's located on a state highway technically. This is just, there's not really much development. There's already existing disturbance on this side. This was occurred long, long ago. What would you like to add, Mr. Zaren?
Watch train.
Yes. Good evening. I don't think there's too much more to add. We obviously got the variance and we are hopeful that you will approve it tonight. It will be temporary until we build the first villa and then it'll get moved to that. And, you know, we will, I think there was a comment, we will restore the native grass there and native, even though it was already mowed and so I understand they had never gotten an approval for it.
Correct.
And, you know, we'll also plant a couple of trees and try to, you know, bring it back to a somewhat of a natural state.
Since I believe that the customers of the villa, or the villas in the hotel, will be using that bridge ultimately to get across to the CIA, I imagine you want to make it look as nice as possible.
Yes.
Thank you. Any comments from the consultants? Any comments from the board? I just want to say that in my absence, when I was having fun in the sun in DeRoch, members of the board took a sidewalk and I know that made a huge difference because I saw their comments. It really alleviated all the concerns. I can't say that enough. So, that's why sometimes going physically is the right thing to do. Would any member of the public like to speak about this application? They're being them, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, I remember.
Resolution granting site plan approval of sales trailer, CIA Hotel and Villas, December 20th, 2023. Resolution number 2019-39C. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants conditional site plan approval to the sales trailer application as depicted on the sales trailer site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designate to sign the sales trailer site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by the zoning administrator and planning board engineer of the reclamation plan for the area of the sales trailer after its removal, which shall include the planting of native grasses and trees. Be it further resolved that this resolution does not authorize removal of any trees or brush and that no trees or brush shall be removed while the review of the lodging facility project is pending. And be it further resolved that this determination in no way commits the planning board to approve the lodging facility project and the applicant has taken on the risk that any pre-sales will need to be returned if the lodging facility project is not approved or significantly amended as a result of the planning board's continued review or that any pre-sales violate any applicable laws or regulations of the state of New York.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Of course. The next item on the agenda is workshop item for the Hotel and Villas as well. First, we've been kind of going back and forth as to whether or not subdivision was needed or required. It appears it is. So, the first thing we're going to do tonight is accept for sketch because that's under our requirement, I think, as you know. It has no bearing on seeker or anything else. Then there were some other questions that we had overall about the current site plan that I think we can get into tonight. But first, Mr. Zaren, would you like to commence yourself? Want to add anything I should say?
Well, I think a couple of things, items, just quick items to bring to rest. One, we do have the consent of the CIA for the merger of the lots and the subdivision application. I'll have that in written form in the next day or two, so that issue is put to rest. And, two, I know there were a number of comments that we've received, some more recently than others. I think we've tried to address most of the others, but rather than go through each of these items and respond to it unless you seek that, I can put it into just a more consolidated memo and so answer.
That's what I think would be better because it would give the planning board the opportunity to review it as well as the consultants. And by the way, Bonnie, thank you so much for getting the memo out. I know you had a lot of family pressures, issues going along through during that time period, so thank you for getting it in time. We are for the board's edification. We are looking to try to conclude seeker at our first meeting in January. We note that we have letters now from Winnicke Land Trust. We have, we've received letters from DOT. We've received a lot of information and we have Bonnie's most recent comment letter. One question I had, and I think it's something that the consultants will have as well, is there, it appears that COCOs will still be used as a construction staging area?
Per our last meeting with the board and some of the comments that we received, we have notified, well, we've agreed to, I thought we had put it in some writing, that we will only use COCOs as a temporary access easement for the limited six to eight month period until we complete the improvements at the intersection. That was something that the DOT, we arranged with the DOT. We are not going to place any fencing on COCOs. We're not going to place any of the trailers, containers, or park on COCOs. We will move the staging area onto the site in the area where the access road is and we'll show that in the revised site plan when we put together the final site plan. So, we, as far as we're concerned, we're only going to be using COCOs as a temporary access easement.
So, my question really involved, when you say move the staging area, what components make up the staging area that would be on COCO's property?
Nothing. It will, they will just, we'll use the existing curb cut, bring in the trucks. There'll be a little connected trail or, you know, dirt between the boundary of COCOs to the access road connecting the two, but there will be no construction of any kind on COCOs.
I think my bigger question is really, when the trucks are leaving COCOs, they'll go out onto nine, take a right to do the construction on the proposed road. When they're coming back, when it's during rush hour in the afternoon, they'll be coming back taking a left onto Route 9 and taking immediate left into COCOs. Or they, so they will go onto Route 9. There's not going to be a small weight, little connector between the proposed road and COCO's parking lot?
Chris, why?
Thank you, Chris.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, there will be a construction, stabilized construction access between COCOs and our main access road to our site. Purely that will be to control sediment deposition going on to the parking lot in COCOs. We have to remember during the course of construction of the main intersection, we are going to have traffic control and flaggers out there. So, if there are any trucks that may be exiting our site, it will be under the purview of a traffic control and a flagger during those hours of operation. And as Michael alluded to, the intent here is six to eight months. The DOT has shared with us that both after six to eight months, we can have access along the main point of the project area at St. Andrews. During the course of the first six months, the emergency access, because that's an easier access to put in, they would allow us the opportunity to utilize that in the morning for construction access so that we can begin the work going down to the Marichika to build the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you.
Hopefully that clarifies all your questions.
Yeah, my concern is really, afternoon traffic, as you know, going north is pretty crowded on Route 9. Even having a flagger, it will allow you to go in and take a left, I hope, because you have to stop southbound traffic as well. It's a pretty tight, as soon as you take the left, it's a pretty tight cut over. But I just want to make sure that you're not exacerbating the traffic and through the highway.
Well, DOT will limit, DOT will also, under highway work permit, they, like, will limit the time when they, when any vehicle, any construction vehicles need to be off the highway because of that exact, exact point. It could be three o'clock, 3:30, you know, whatever.
Correct.
We'll get through that.
It's also important to note that we're in the embryonic stages of the construction at that point, so it's going to be mainly just site activities taking place.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Let me start with my left with the consultants. Ms. France, you just produced an extensive memo.
I did.
And Mr. Zaren told me tonight they did a fire drill, which meant that he had all his consultants going with huzzas. But rather than them presenting it tonight, when we have an all, I don't think all of us have had a chance to read your memo completely yet, I'm guessing. I thought it would be better for them to have a memo in response back to us.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's anything earth shattering there at all. So, it's just a matter of, you know, some, so there had been a response memo prepared for an earlier one of our memos, but when it came to some of the secret comments, we didn't see responses. So, we just wanted to get responses to some of the prior comments to see if they were addressed or what the rationale was. And then we did have the opportunity to review the habitat assessment and we just think that, you know, from the perspective of impacts, that some of them should just be acknowledged. And from our perspective, we're not saying they're significant or adverse. It's just merely their impacts, we have to acknowledge them and make sure that if there is any mitigation, that that is brought forth. So that ultimately, we're trying to write a seeker determination. So, really, I think a lot of the, you know, comments that I had had previously were whittled down. A lot of it focused on the habitat assessment and then just making sure we have whatever information we need to be able to get to that determination. And again, you know, the planning board will make that determination when it's ready.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks.
Ted, any comments?
No, not at this time.
Mrs. Zatera?
Our comment, any comments that I had in regards to getting to a seeker determination have been addressed. We do get the construction phasing plans, but again, we'll look at those as we go through site plans. So, at this time, no, no further comments.
Thank you. I think that one area that doesn't necessarily rise to the level of secret, but that we haven't, in my opinion at least, fully addressed is the disturbance close to protected areas. Sorry, okay.
Nope, you're right. You're right.
I can address that.
So, yeah, if you guys want to go ahead and address.
Yeah, we've done some additional looking at that. So, we've done a number of things, just as you recall, based on some of the previous comments you made. We, at first, you may recall, previously we had committed to that any foundation wall would be six feet from the property and we would amend our site plans accordingly to show that any pier would be four feet. And as well as that we were going to put up the barriers, the non-disturbance barriers and do the work from the inside so that we would be protective. Pete brought up at one of the, I think the last meeting or the meeting before, that he wanted to see whether we could do 10 feet. So, we went back and looked at our plans and think that we can commit to 10 feet for all the foundation walls, six feet for the piers, as well as Consigli, who will be the general contractor out there, will be monitoring this and, you know, and certifying compliance. And, you know, if there's, if there's ever any encroachment of any kind, I would, I would suggest that it's written into the conditions as well as we will incorporate into our contracts self-reporting. So, Consigli will be responsible for ensuring that we, we are in compliance with, with these. And they'll be on the site, obviously, daily.
Big shoulders, Scott.
Big man.
Heavy burden.
Look, if this is not new for us and certainly we're no use to working with these kind of rules and regulations. So, look, we take it very seriously and we understand. I've heard at every meeting that we've been here what a big concern it is and we'll be sure to adhere to those.
I think part of it was because the initial letter we got from Sina Cutson was about habitat fragmentation and not necessarily for endangered threat to rare species, just regular species everywhere, which is why Bonnie asked for a little bit of an expansion. So, again, I'm always looking to make sure that we're taking the appropriate hard looks so that if somehow, some way we're sued, we win. And I think we've done that pretty extensively here. So, thank you, Peter, for bringing that up and thank you.
And, you know, the 10 feet to, you know, the foundations and being able to access, you know, the back of the building, that's, that's certainly like enough room for them to do their work. And then the six foot, as Michael had mentioned, was for the piers for decks, basically. So, I mean, that's just, that doesn't require like machinery to get around the building. The machinery will be for the foundation work.
We've also included a new details in our civil plans at sheet C550 showing these details so that we'll be, we can be held enforceable accordingly. And in the final site plans, we'll ensure that all these setbacks are reflected in the final building locations.
I should add, your associate, Ms. Roberts, was questioning about what to do and how to sort of show with the COCOs incorporation. And the reason why we didn't have a good, a quick answer initially was because I was looking at its potential seeker impact and we hadn't seen anything. But the idea that you're going to have that connection as well as DOT limiting your hours, I think takes care of that so we can just wait to see however, whatever that's going to look like on the site plan itself.
Right.
The next iteration. Ms. Pauder, any comments?
Yeah, just following up on the COCOs, but do, for seeker, do you at least want an area of disturbance for this roadway and a restoration plan unless it's going to stay?
Well, there's not going, I don't think there's going to be, there's not going to be a new roadway, right? It's just the, it's just, it's just the existing asphalt parking lot and then from the asphalt parking lot, oh.
There'll be a small connect, a very small connection.
Oh, I thought the property line was right on a pavement.
The lower loads from the property line to the access road is short distance.
Which we showed already in, in the, we did submit plans. Unfortunately, those plans showed the containers and the on COCOs. So, that will be reflected to take off, but that did show the connecting road that we did submit. Pete, you're right.
I think we need clarity from Ted as well because there's been so much discussion about whether it needs to be on the site plan or whether it's just a separate phasing plan.
I sent an email earlier today and it does need to be shown if they're going to use the access. And there needs to be the agreement with the property owner. And that's consistent with, as Cynthia reminded me, we did this at PLT.
Yep. We have, I think we included in our submission an email with the consent of the CIA for the use of that. I'll make sure that, and we can, the only question is, do you want it? I know you want a final site plan. You don't want us to feed you this in state continuing stages. So, do you want, do you want this before January 3rd? Or do you want one?
I'll just take the lead here.
Go ahead, please.
I don't think that we need this before January 3rd because while there is a small connection, it's also not a very big distance. In addition, I think that because this is going to be your formal entry and exit, that you're going to propose landscaping on the other side of the road. So, rather than look at reclamation and planting with natives, I think you'd want to be able to let, work with you guys on landscaping as to see what you want along there. It seems to me right now that you have proposed a sort of rustic entrance that would have natural flora and fauna around as you go, so you don't look like you're going into a very manicured area. Maybe that's what you do to reclaim this little small area as well. It's kind of up to you on that. Yes, Bonnie?
I was, I was going to make a suggestion. Could you just attach to the memo that you're going to prepare, just, you know, eight and a half by or 11 by 17?
It's a great idea.
Just shows that connection, what the disturbance is. So, we have it on the record.
For the benefit of the board, we've submitted the plan already. It's sheet C601. That shows the, and it's part of the phasing plans that we've submitted.
That, I didn't look at the phasing plan yet. That's where it is. Okay.
The construction phasing?
Yes, the.
But that was not submitted to this board. That was submitted to Ted and Pete. So, it's not part of the record.
That's why I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, our understanding was.
It will be, it will be at some point part of, part of the set.
Yeah. It will be. Our understanding was that that goes through the review of Pete and Ted. That was our direct submission from our meeting.
Which is fine. It's like an offline meeting that they can guide us. But it would still be nice with the memo if you went ahead and attached, since you already got it, just attach it with.
Yeah, proceed. We'll make sure it's covered.
Yeah. We'll either attach 601 or we'll do.
We'll give them the whole phasing.
We got it.
If you put ones at a scale, it'd be kind of nice to see.
Sure. You know, similar to what we did for Bellfield, you know, the planning board's going to want to weigh in on, you know, the phasing and, you know, we'll come, we'll have, you know, the notes somewhere like the Bellfield on like phasing and I don't know that you guys, I don't know, maybe you do. I mean, do you know how you're going to like progress the site or it's going to be market like driven or phase one, is this, phase two, 100%, is this three, four?
What we do know, yeah.
Correct. The focus of the actual construction of the buildings was to look at the western side of the site, the hotel spa.
Yeah, I knew, yeah.
That's kind of how we laid out the construction purposes.
Okay.
So, all the site work really relates to how we get the utilities from there to over to the culinary and how we get, tie into the water along Route 9. So, we spelled that out. We've given detailed sequencing schedules for each particular phase and when they get wrapped up and limits of disturbance for each.
Okay, good. In other words, you're going to have the amenities early on so that it'll make it easier for sales because when it's purchased, they can go right in and go to the spa or whatever else, which makes sense.
The infrastructure will be phase one, then they'll be, and then the leasehold villas will be per absorption, per.
Thank you. Yep.
I want to just turn to the subdivision for a moment.
Yeah.
Because if the board grants sketch tonight, the idea is that they would close the hearing just on the subdivision before they complete their seeker review?
Yes.
Oh, no, they do the seeker review and then they close the hearing. But either way, you have to submit a final plan application.
Right.
And so normally, right now, it's part of your site plan set, but usually it's a separate set with a separate cover sheet and signature blocks and you'll have to go through and make sure that all the required information is on.
Well, we are in, we're, we've been preparing that, so we'll, we'll submit that.
Okay.
And it's because it's being filed with the county clerk, that's why it has to be separated, submitted separately. Any other comments from the consultants or Ted? Let me start from my right, Mr. Garcia. Any comments?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No additional comments.
Thank you. Ms. Waters?
No, I'm just glad to see it progressing and I'll look forward to the next complete submission.
Final.
Mr. Waters?
Yes. I had an offline meeting with Michael Gaddy from Gensler and in that meeting we discussed, you know, my concerns with the, some of the architectural, just to, you know, just to button some things up maybe prior to them submitting, you know, final drawings and stuff so that we can maybe get some of these things ironed out. And again, they, you know, I specified that they were my concerns, not the board's or anything, but, but then I, you know, we discussed like the flat roofs and some of the fire, you know, the fire pits because New York State in, you know, changed their code now, you can't have gas fireplaces and new construction and how that would affect things and whether it does or not and when that is implemented. Also dimensions. And then also to, I explained that it would be nice for the board to be able to see some of the articulation in these, the footprints of the buildings. Because, you know, when you're looking at the elevation, if you have the footprint here, you could say, oh, okay, I see that, that pulls forward, that's back. It doesn't, you know, break that 100-foot code, you know, of continuous built, you know, wall. And just, just little things like that. And then it was really a good, I think it was a good meeting and I think, you know, the footprints that are existing now are to remain, basically. There's not going to be any big changes. It's just whether things pull a little bit.
Yep.
And stuff like that, different roof lines, stuff like that. So, that's.
I'm sorry that I couldn't join you guys yesterday and it was really fun because I got yelled at by a banker. Always a really fun thing to do. For someone, it started before I was even on this board, or that board. At any rate, thank you and thank you for taking the initiative. This is our CIA, the TCC dorms, it remains a continuing problem and when they built them, they took a balloon mortgage out, so every five years it has to be renewed.
Oh, man.
I killed the people who did that. At any rate, thank you so much and thank you for negotiating together. The no flat roof isn't our code, but we are allowed to permit it if there's nothing, no other way to disguise it, et cetera. Our code also requires, Rob was pointing out, that if there's any dimension that's longer than any wall length that's over 100 feet, it's supposed to be articulated into small Ls, using cornices, any way to disguise it so to reduce the massing. I did not know that there were no gas fireplaces now allowed.
I think that's it.
Yeah, actually, when you mentioned that, I talked to the team here. Is that residential or is that for commercial? This is a fully commercial.
Part of it is commercial. And I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I didn't read the, I just know that, I mean, maybe Mr. Davis knows that, I don't know, but there's, New York State had, had implemented that, I think. And I know it was an issue in Bellfield in their main entry. They can't have a gas lit fireplace in their entry.
Can you still do wood?
I, I believe so, but it was, I'm not exactly sure how, you know, I didn't get into the nuts and bolts of it, but I just, I just was looking it up.
Doesn't seem environmentally sustainable to use wood, Brandon.
Right. Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's why I, I'm not sure if it'll even affect it because it might be disbanded once they find out that.
We'll make sure we check, we check the codes and we'll make sure it's compliant.
Just, yeah, I mean, just look into that. You know, that's, that's one of the things I just looked at, that I saw. But whether the leaseholds are residential and the rest of the property is, you know, the hotel is commercial.
It's all, it's not.
You'll have to check it.
100% commercial.
Check it.
I'm putting on the record for a moment, because Ted would like me to, I believe, that there are different categorizations, classifications for under zoning versus under building code.
Yeah.
So, for our purposes, this is not residential. This is lodging. Making sure I put that out. I don't know what Mr. Westermeyer, how he'll look at this, but you're the architect.
We're going to check, make sure the code.
I think you're a big enough firm that you probably have lots of people to call.
We'll figure it out.
We've been looking at it from a commercial standpoint with the spray, because we're sprinkling each individual building as well.
Yeah. So, again, I don't know what's involved in it. So, it's just something that it could raise, you know, like it changed things, you know, dramatically. So, that was it. And then just the dimensions. And we spoke about, you know, north, south, east and west elevations.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because the drawings we sent, in some cases, we elevated the three sides that we felt were the most.
Significant.
Significant. Are we going to, we can resubmit this set with the additional fourth elevation.
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Okay, as part of that. And then he's saying add the plans just so you guys can relate, relate the footprint. The footprints are not changing. There's some articulation, I was telling Rob, that we're already kind of in the process of working on. The flat roof situation, in some cases, we're doing the, the green roofs and the water
reclamation, so they're, in those cases, obviously, that, that has a purpose for being flat. And in others, they're very slightly sloped, yes.
I was just going to say, for the planning board to agree or to be able to relax requirements under site plan, all you have to do is provide a justification for it. We have to agree with justification, but I believe that going more green to reclaim water and have green roofs, sounds like a pretty good reason to me.
Good reason.
But I'm not leading my, my board, I promise. But thank you, Rob. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have discussed that, that it made sense being green roof, you know, so, but in, in certain areas and others that aren't, you know, we just don't want to see massive roof, you know, on some of the bigger structures.
It also helps us to hide mechanical and...
It most certainly does. That's, I hear add, by the way, that when it comes to articulating the structure, that doesn't, it's not required under our code that you would have a footprint that would do the same thing. That's why I mentioned, Mr. Zeran will remember, I forgot, I forgot to mention to the Saki company, Asai Shuuso, when they first came, that that was the build, the structure, the Saki facility was built as a grocery store prior to the adoption of the current code. There wasn't a requirement for articulation and they didn't want to have to change the building footprint. So when I looked deeper, it actually mentions that you can accomplish it with patios, a bunch of different ways, so they were able to incorporate...
Angolas.
Yep, angolas. They were able to incorporate all, all the changes that were required basically through structural means, but not anything to the edifice itself, except for the angawa. So that's why Robert was correct, why we didn't see the, I didn't see the dimensions at first because we were looking at sort of illustrative concepts. So again, thank you because that is an important section for the code. Even though this won't be visible to the public at large, we still try to make sure that we don't have big massive looking buildings inside Hyde Park as required by our code. Mr. Vee?
No comment.
Love your, let's all give him a little applause there for wearing the boldness jacket.
Got it at Tarjay, in case you're wondering.
And it's GFI protected.
It is. Haiti never takes a holiday.
You elated.
I told Don I saw that jacket online last year and I was, then I, I thought, well, that'd be kind of wild and fun. Then when I looked more closely, it turned it around, it shed the lights. I was like, I'm not doing this thing with the lighting there, it'd scare me to death.
How's he grounded?
That's what I mean.
GFI?
So Bonnie gave us, Ms. Transom gave us, took the liberties, I'll say, after we asked her to, to found a part two in the EAF. This was sent out to us yesterday and we just printed it out before you, ahead of time. Victoria, do you want us to go over this one by one or?
I mean, you know, if it's no at the top, you can skip the whole section.
Well, on the impact on land, it is yes because there will be small or moderate impacts, but nothing that requires necessarily a pos deck. There are going to be, have some construction on seeper slopes, but they're actually making sure that they preserve those as opposed to taking them out completely.
Excuse me, Michael, we don't have a copy of that. Is there something we could be looking at?
Just listen.
Are you going to charge us?
It's 25 cents a page.
Give it back. Okay, thank you.
I will tell you that probably the reason why you don't have it is because I don't think I could train you guys, but over the last 17 years here, the number of people, at least in initial 10 maybe, would say, here we fill out the part two EAF and I'm like, hello.
Rips.
So you don't fill out the EAF, the planning board does, as well as part three, because otherwise we might see no impacts everywhere. Wouldn't that be nice for you guys? Anyway, anybody, I take it we're all in agreement with Bonnie that there will be moderate to minor impacts on land?
Moderate to large impacts.
Moderate to large impacts, but also not require, nothing requiring.
Right.
And then just again, as a reminder, we do the check so that when the determination is made up, we make sure we're addressing how these were mitigated or modified.
Right.
What I was saying, the, usually when we see impacts on the slope is because the slope's going to be leveled in terms of Iowa or Kansas, flat. That's one of the reasons I like this project is because they really are incorporating what the code supposedly suggests that you do is try to take advantage of the natural contours of the land. But it's a lot, it's a little bit more expensive, I think, to do that than it is to just flatten it out, so. Question number two, or rather, part two, section two, impacted geological features is a no. Impacts on surface water is indeed, of course, a yes because they're going to be constructing near water bodies as well as they out, they got a variance to go within the hundred-foot adjacent area to a water body and they'll be required to get DEC permits as well to cross the Marichigal. Bonnie, do you want to elucidate anything else in this section?
Uh, no, just that there's some freshwater impacts and, you know, for the most part, it's really related to the, either the drain, drainage, surface waters or freshwater wetlands and the Marichigal.
Yep. The next section, impacts on surface, I'm sorry, the next section, impacts on groundwater is a no. Following that, impact on flooding is yes, but that's primarily because it's going to need new stormwater management techniques and drainage techniques as opposed to what's there right now.
Right.
But this is also a point where I can help the applicants and point out that when we were having questions last time about, say, the ravine that's by the distillery, they were able to explain that there would still be surface flow, there would still be the sort of indentation, we'll call it, rather than an actual channelization, but they're trying to still keep as much of a natural drainage pattern as possible. Anybody have any questions or comments on that one?
No.
The next area is impacts on air, that's a no. The next is impacts on plants and animals and the primary reason there is because, of course, there are, is going to be some disruption of what has been just regular habitat for regular species. But as I also would like to point out to anybody who's watching, but also for the board to remember, you know, the town board is elected officials to the ones who create our zoning code in the first place. And there are areas that they designate as being appropriate for commercial development or some kind of development. In the same way, there are other areas, like the green, where they said, eh, we should limit the development out here, we should keep it as green as possible, as rural as possible. And this is an area that despite the fact that sometimes I personally have misgivings to see trees, et cetera, removed, all that, the fact is, is that this is an area that the town board has designated as appropriate for these kinds of activities, otherwise it wouldn't be permitted in the first place. So we have to make that trade off as board members, but let me just turn, anybody want to add anything to that?
Right.
No.
I know. Michael?
Yes, Rob?
Seven A and B with respect to the threatened or endangered species, Bonnie, I think our studies showed in the DC records that there weren't any threatened or endangered species on the site.
So I, so I looked at it as a threshold that they came in with those, the potential for that and then this will get explained that based on the studies, they weren't found. So even though we identify it because it's more of a threshold, we explain it away ultimately in the determination.
And this would be, part of this would be, there are, there's always appropriate Indiana bat habitat species there because when I started up here, it was shagbar kikri, it was peeling. Now it's almost any rock or roots, but we know what the mitigation for that is, which is, and they're not, they haven't been found on site, but I know that there are potential areas for it. So that's why we then would list mitigation as that you're only going to cut down trees within this timeframe.
Okay. So I just want to be clear that maybe there's a lot of different ways, different approaches to, to this document that at least people take. The board is taking the position that a generic project of this kind could potentially result in these impacts. It's not the project that's, that's before you.
Yep. Remember, a lot, a lot of times, this is where we, this is kind of a starting point almost.
Right.
And this would drive an applicant to go do studies and find out if there is going to be an impact and they come back and they say no because they have a study. This is, you've already done that.
Because the only other...
Aren't there Indiana bats habit, I mean, aren't, aren't we following the Indiana bat tree clearing protocol?
That's what I just said, because they've already proposed that, because there's a potential.
Well, right, so that's the potential.
So that's the mitigation.
Right.
Right, exactly.
That's your follow-up.
Exactly. So, so you're hitting the threshold.
You're hitting the threshold, but you're mitigating the impact by doing this.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's not a generic project. It's this, it's this project.
Well, no, but, but I believe with Mr. Zeran, I'm not going to insert words, the way I took it was, any project that's going to invade undisturbed land is going to probably have the same problem with Indiana bats and maybe even northern long-eared.
Yeah.
So that's just the way this is up here because again, the DEC started out saying, oh, just this one kind of tree with excessive foliating bark. Now it's like almost any place. So I haven't seen a project that we've had in the last five years that we haven't had to deal with Indiana bat and northern long-eared. The other BTR species that was listed, I believe it's state, is the something-nosed sturgeon, I'm forgetting what it is.
The blood-nosed?
Blood-nosed sturgeon.
Atlantic sturgeon.
I should know that, but this won't be impacting them at all.
You've got to watch out for them.
Nor the short-eared sturgeon.
Correct.
Or any sturgeon, for that matter.
You are correct.
So did that, did that answer your question, Mr. Zeran? Or your concern, I should say?
It does. I mean, different, different boards approach part two differently and, you know, my, my experience at some boards have been that they, they take the project as proposed with...
The mitigation already proposed and to say nothing's going to happen.
With the measures that are already proposed and they judge it based on that, you're doing it differently and...
And this board also does a part three on projects of this size. So therefore, the part three is where we list the mitigation and go back to the part two, so that's our practice, so to speak. If it, we haven't, we haven't been sued in a long, long time. And we've never been sued on secret.
Yeah.
Happy to say. So I don't think this will give rise to a potential lawsuit of itself.
I'll, I defer.
Okay, thank you.
I defer. It's just, it's just different approaches.
Well, again, because we do part threes, I've seen planning boards that don't even know what a part three is. I'm like, help! You know what I mean?
Go ahead.
Next area is number eight, impacted agricultural resources. There is none. In fact, on aesthetic resources, there is some. I believe what we can, what we'll be doing there is talking about proposed coloration as required by scenic cuts and easement that will mitigate any visual impacts, the fact that you're keeping things behind the berm, la, 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 la.
Right.
Sorry. I've only seen this in my head where we're going, so that's why. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that one?
No.
The next is impacted on historical archaeological resources and there is no, we have a sign-off from the National Parks Service Director. There wouldn't be specific visual impacts there. We've also had some visual, some visual analysis, but it is located to historic properties.
Actually, related to that, where are we with, so in my memo, I talked about sort of where are some of the sign-offs or the typical letters that we get. Where is SHPO on all of this?
Yeah, we've, we've presented our reports to SHPO. They have signed off on them. They, they haven't given us any written, you know, written sign-off, but that was one of the reasons we designated protected areas. We did some further testing under the revised plan that will include.
Okay.
We didn't include those reports because we hadn't finished the phase two investigations on one of two sites.
Oh, okay.
So you'll, you'll see that.
So you had to go to phase two on some of them or one B?
We went, we had to go to phase two on three of them. One of them was not, two of them, small areas that will, will highlight, which will be protected just like we had on the other ones.
So you'll send those reports?
We'll send that with the memo.
Okay.
Can you have your consultant actually add us to the Chris distribution list?
Sure. You are.
We, we are. We aren't?
No, I don't know. I haven't heard anything from them.
Yeah, we haven't, we don't have anything from SHPO.
Okay, well.
We haven't done anything in a long time.
So SHPO takes like 30 days to turn around. Do you expect a letter of no effect by January?
I will, I will re-contact them and, and see. I know that they have not, they have not provided any secret comments they received. We know the circulation's September. Before that, we shared with them our reports. I know Hartgen has talked with them and they, they were comfortable with the reports and alike, so let me, let us, I'll talk and see if there's anything that we can get in writing, but we've been...
When, when did, when did the last reports get to, when were they sent to SHPO? When were the last reports done, if they were phase twos? Was it recently?
No, they signed off in methodology, but we haven't sent them the final, those final reports.
Oh, so you're not going to have a letter of no effect by January?
No, probably not. But they, I, I mean, for secret purposes, you'll see all the information.
I mean, we generally always leave for the letter of no effect, but you'll hold it.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe they can send us some, we like the no effect letter, maybe they can send something in terms of secret that no significant adverse or give us something.
Well, we've advised our consultant that they can't source.
Our consultant has informed us that we've been advised to erect a construction fence and a silt fence around all the areas of concern. That's a direction we've been given and that's what we've put on our plans and that's come from SHPO so far.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll provide you with further...
I, I think if we have the reports, that'll give us like, because right now we don't have contacts, contacts, you know.
Well, you have all the reports, you just don't have the fi, the final one on a small limited area and how we'll provide, because we just finished the phase two on the, that additional small area.
All right. I, I, so I had emailed Kate and so she has my comments because when I looked at the maps, it didn't include like good, big chunks of the property.
Correct.
But, but I think it's in part because you might have done some of that already.
We had done, we had done already and we just had a s...
Right.
Area, small area that we hadn't done.
Right.
And we did that.
Okay. Yeah, so I just asked her to send those old reports and then the, again, whatever's updated.
And those old reports are all responsible for all the protected areas we have on the site plan.
Exactly. Yeah, I got that sense.
Okay.
And I think they were from 2009 or so.
Some, yeah, some were more recent than that.
I don't know that you have them or not.
We have them. And I was sitting up here during all this time. And I was sitting up, of course I have them. They were for the original hotel that was approved, a different project, but it was original hotel.
Yeah.
And I, I'll add, they found so many chirts and oarts, et cetera, that the original project, the first hotel, they just went, we're leaving that alone, we're abandoning that area, we're banning this area because, you know, you, they had to keep digging until they satisfied Peoples Island.
What?
Well, Cassandra, so just for, in case there's some audience member who's curious about what Phase One and Phase Two is, Phase One is just a literature study, looking through to see what's been out there, et cetera, Phase Two is when they think it's warranted to actually go out and perform digs and do more work, and Phase Three is where you don't wanna hear.
It's mitigation.
Yeah.
Yeah, Phase...
Which people don't really like to do.
That's why I said you don't wanna hear about Phase Three request.
Millions of dollars it takes them all to...
Well, what we did, we did is, we did, we did all shovel testing, then if we had any hits, we shovel tested again to be, to determine whether that hit was of historical significance, or it was...
Yeah, to do closer intervals on it.
Or is just, and so we've done all those, and we did it also for the revised areas on the site, or under the revised plan, so I'll get you the final.
Okay.
Do you, do you want all the studies from 2009 for the last project that have already been, those areas with non-disturbance before?
I just think it's, it's useful to put it in the current file, so that's not lost, but other, but otherwise, I don't know that you have to print them all out, but if there's something digitally, just for the record.
We...
Because those files, Don only knows where they are.
What's that?
The old files are somewhere else.
To be honest with you, I don't know that we received things digitally back in 2009.
Okay, well, well...
Yeah.
If we did, it was, it was in a little...
Yeah, well, like I told you, I found, for all the old St. Andrews stuff, now Bellafield, everything's on a disk, and I went to put it on my computer and went, "Oh, right, there's no CD-ROMs and laptops anymore", I mean, I bought a thing that's an external thing now to help.
We have a CD we'll send to you.
That's what I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure...
I happen to have a computer still that uses it.
All right, well, well...
Because that, that, that application was, never extended its approval, they abandoned it, I pretty much am sure that my original paper copies are long ago and recycling, so if we want, if you can get something digitally to us, that'd be great. And just so you know, Mr. Zarin, when we had Roosevelt Firehouse years ago in 9G, the new one, SHPO was non-responsive, and so I said I'd call right then and there in a meeting, and I couldn't get through the person, but then I said, "Put me through to Commissioner, to Rose Harvey, the Commissioner", and somehow he magically came on, so Commissioner Colless is a personal friend of mine, so if you have a problem getting something with SHPO, call me.
I will.
I'll be happy to make a phone call for you.
I will, great.
Because sometimes friends in high places, or low in my case, can help, so...
Sounds like you have a bad phone, put me through the commissioner.
No.
He pulls off his shoe and starts playing with the heel.
This is the advantage of having chaired the Starry Star Inn for the Walkway over the Hudson, eight years in a row, because it enables them to raise a lot of money, or to match the money that we raised every year, that's why the walkway looks like it does. Going back now, impacts on historical and archaeological resources, we'll wait to hear, we would like to hear something more from SHPO about what's going there, how big are the areas you're talking about, that they're concerned with, they're probably really small.
Very small, if one, one is gonna prob, the, the two we're talking about now is, one will require us probably to reduce one of the villas and one of the lots, that's how small that is, and then another one, we may have to, they found maybe a building, small building foundations, so we might have to, we might have to move or do something to one of the smaller detention bases.
Are they gonna require you to take this stuff out?
No, that would be, no, that would be by our choice if we go Phase Three, and that would be that we would go to, we would go to SHPO and say that we want to do an excavation and...
Have everything saved to Peoples Island, so it can be looked at for educational interpretive purposes.
And we might, we might eventually do that with, with one particular, one particular site.
In your case, it might be interesting for the guests.
The what?
It might be interesting for your guests.
Yeah, and then we would do, we would do illustrative materials, I just did one of those with Native American, with SHPO.
This was the Lenape tribe, I believe, in this area?
Yeah, we're not finding any, any Native American, but we did that with SHPO where we excavated cultural stones, religious stones, set, brought the stones, set them up, put illustrative signs on them, you know.
That sounds a bit Indiana Jones, but I like the, the concept.
I think that's an interesting, that's, I think it's always good for, for residents
and future residents and visitors to understand that there is a link to history, particularly up in this area, and that's how you get it, is by providing some sort of link there, visual for them to see. The next area of interest would be impact on open space and recreation, there are none, this is not used for recreation areas right now, the next is an impact on the critical environmental area, there is not one established there, only Hogback Hill, which is pretty far away, the next one is impact on transportation, yes, but we know the mitigation is there because we've worked with DOT significantly, and I believe that's also why they're letting you use the emergency entrance for construction, is because, to reduce impacts on traffic. Impact on energy, yes, because there's brand-new development and it will cause energy resources to be utilized, but I believe that the mitigation there is that you're going to be lead, lead silver, I believe that's what I heard.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Impact on noise, odor, and light, there's always impacts when you have new development on noise, but the mitigation is just, but it's temporary, in this case, as Mr. Sotera's pointed out, like, unlike Bellafield, there aren't a lot of sensitive receptor areas nearby, they're pretty far away, and probably the closest would be the dormitories.
Right.
Let's assume that all those kids are partying, right, I'm just teasing. At any rate, then, impact on human health, so Bonnie, this is where you put, it's within fifteen hundred feet of a school, because Peter was like, going, "What? What the hell?".
You had to bring that up.
I was, we, you know, public, secondary school.
That's what I was thinking, thank you.
Elementary or...
No, I, I thought of it the same way.
Victoria's also looking at scans.
And people at the CIA are also thirty-five years old.
But it's all mitigated by the wellness center.
I'm not sure what the trigger for this question is, other than, I mean, the fact that it's creating solid waste, like, garbage?
So, so the actual question itself is...
It's just, is it located, doesn't it?
It just says, is it next, is it located?
No, no, but that's, you only go to A if, if sixteen is met.
Now, I go through A, B, C, if any of that's met, then I check the sixteen.
Oh, no, I...
In terms of the potential source of contamination, Mike, you have the Marichi Kill.
In terms of the source of potential contamination between the two parts, the school and the site, you do have the Marichi Kill between both parcels, so any source of contamination would not necessarily make its way to the school property based on the ravine between both sites.
But, I'm, just as a threshold question, I don't, I, the question is, will the proposed action impact human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants? So I don't think you have to go to any of the sub-questions.
So you think that sixteen is no?
Should've been no.
That's what I'm saying, as well.
No.
I, I mean, I would recommend...
Why don't you guys argue it out?
No, I don't wanna argue, I'm just, I'm just...
It's also, they don't argue, they suggest to the board.
I'm only kidding.
Also, actually, and also, is, is a college referred to as a school, isn't the intent to be on young children or high school-aged children?
I think it's school, yeah, I think learning, it's, yeah.
Learning, we're all learning, in every building.
In terms of, in terms of institutional...
It's also a concentrated area of people.
Yes, if you keep going, it says group home and retirement community.
It's sensitive receptors, but...
But, but I, I, I think if you look at the parcel itself, there is no existing...
Will it have a potential impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contamination?
There's neither...
Will the proposed action have, so I see, I kinda see what you're saying.
Well, but the question is, the question is, are there existing contaminants on site? And the answer is no.
Right.
Is the proposed project contemplated to produce contaminants? And the answer is no for that.
Right.
So it should be no, in my opinion.
If you wanna say no, it's okay.
It, it might be, but then it could be explained away, just like we just did.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's always safe to say maybe and then answer the way than to say no, but...
I just don't see how a moderate to large impact, I think there's going to be a, a small impact.
Yeah, then, that's, that's just the, if you look at the instructions at the beginning, it says if you are larger or closer than that threshold, they default to moderate to large, and I don't need, I, the, this is, this form was modified a while ago, I don't like it, but...
Yeah, when we first got it, we liked, we kinda liked the old one.
But I can see saying no also.
If you're focusing on exposure, if you're talking about exposure, what, that's really the key phrase here, exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants, I don't see how we say yes.
There, there are none identified in the EAF.
I haven't heard.
Right, that, um, if we go to the questions in the EAF, 1D, 2Q.
That's construction-related.
Doesn't matter either way.
We look at long-term and construction.
Because we're preparing a Part III, but...
Yeah. Let's just do, no, and we can move on.
Board members, are you all in favor of voting no?
I am.
I am.
Yeah, yeah.
Bonnie, I'm your only, I'm your only holdout, I would have voted yes, wait, we'll change that. No, it's just that, I also, I, I, even if they're tying into the existing septic system, there can be septic failure, the CIA already has septic failure, in case you don't know. When they put in, when they put in the breweries, there was no approval from us on that, their internal, their beer brewery, there's, there was, there's no approval from us on that, and that added more incre, that added an increase to, talk to Poughkeepsie Town Sewer Board sometime, they'll tell you about it, that's because there was, sometimes it overwhelmed the system, it, it's not that it was overwhelming stuff at the CIA site, because they're putting too much, it overwhelmed the system, so Poughkeepsie was producing raw sewage inside the river.
So there's an increase in the OD that's going to their sewer plant, not necessarily volume, but the nature of the sewage.
Then consistency, consistency with community plans, Area 17, there's no issue there because this comports with the adopted zoning that's in the area, and consist, consistency with community character, I take it that the red ones are the ones that you wanted us to look at most part of?
Yeah, so because they lump no or small together, I put red boxes where it's small, as opposed to no, just to point them out.
And...
So you are creating demand for community services, inconsistent with predominant architectural scale and character, which is something that needs to be discussed, inconsistent with character, existing natural landscape, well, you're changing the landscape, so we have to explain it.
No, I agree with that.
Architecture in the town is required to be more traditional.
Yeah.
That's hence the, the forbidden flat roofs, except for one little area in the middle of town, that used to not be allowed there, but anyway, it's, this is a different kind of architecture, but it's a beautiful architecture in its own way, in addition, it's also not necessarily visible from the public, so it's not going to, in other words, they're all small, to moderate, because it's not gonna go, "Oh, my gosh, this has become a modern town", when you see Hyde Park, you're still gonna see more traditional one.
Right.
So again, it's, check the box, but then explain it.
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you for the work on this, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, so we have a resolution prepared, and thank you all for going through all that. We have a resolution prepared tonight to accept for sketch for subdivision, I believe this is yours.
Yes. Resolution to accept for sketch CIA, CIA Hotel and Villas, Resolution Number 2019-39D. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby I, classifies the sketch plan as a minor subdivision pursuant to Section 96-4 of the subdivision law, II, accepts this sketch plan in accordance with Section 96-12C of the subdivision law.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions, motion carries, next step moving forward, so we'll keep them on for January 3rd, but we'll look for your response memo to Bonnie's comments, last final, not final, but most recent comments, I should add, and any SHPO information you can get us, please do, everything else okay with that, otherwise? I'm sorry we made you all come up, this journey so close to Christmas when you didn't all need to be here, so, but we appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
What are you doing tomorrow?
We have a meeting with ZBA on the balance of variances to schedule the public hearing.
That's right, because they accelerated their, right, when they're meeting, so, good luck tomorrow then.
Thank you.
So what, what lovely place are you staying so far here?
Friend in Rhinebeck.
You've got, probably got the best deal.
It's a good deal, yeah.
And here's why I say this, because the hotel across the street's not quite open yet, but I have been, has, has anyone seen the, the hotel across the, at Bellafield, besides me? Yes?
I've seen it from the exterior, I haven't been in.
Am I the only person who's been in the interior? Oh, wow, okay.
How is it?
It's an extended stay hotel, so the finishes and materials in the rooms are not what I would want personally, because, do you ever know people staying there for forever with kids and biking greasy, so it's, it's, that noted.
It's not good.
Well, no, but that noted, if you're gonna stay extended stay, then you wanna have something that's tougher for families, because families can stay, if you're coming, if you're moving here with your family to go to, to become, let's say, a professor at Bard or Marist, if you're gonna stay there for a while, it's great, because you don't have to worry about management coming after you, screaming at you, saying, "You ruined da-da-da-da", because it's tougher, that's just what you do in interior design, right? That noted, the, the main foyer, where you walk in, is pretty impressive, it looks very Aspen-y.
That's where they'll have the wedding, nice.
It's so, you walk in, it's very, very, very impressive, it's impressive up top too, just quite not as impressive, that's all, but then again, I'm a notorious snaw when it comes to materials, so...
May I ask a question of the board?
Yes.
In the event that we're fortunate enough to get granted subdivision approval, what is the timeframe for when that plot has to be filed before the approval is null and void? Some towns, it's sixty days, so I just wanna get my arms around.
Eight, sixty-two days.
Sixty-two days?
Sixty-two, because we have the...
Then thirty days, you get certified copies back to us.
Okay, and there's no extensions on that, correct?
No, we can't, I don't think we can extend the, the time to file, but we're not giving you subdivision...
No, no, I know that, I'm just saying for when, I just want everybody to be aware, because there's parties that have to sign off on it, and, you know, from when it's granted, that evening, you're on...
No, 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 so once it, once it's granted, there's a hundred and eighty days to meet conditions, plus the board can extend the time to meet the conditions, once the conditions are met and it's signed by the chairman, then that's when the sixty days...
Okay.
But your signature, the signatories you're talking about would be part of the condition, so you would have basically two six-month time periods in which, to accomplish that.
Right, you could just have Michael sign last.
Okay, some towns vary with, I just went through one where I had a total of ninety days.
That's weird, because I think it's a state law.
I thought it was, it is state law, so...
Not in Poughkeepsie.
You mean the street of Poughkeepsie, right.
Would this be the town, or, would this be town or city? I'll make sure that the new supervisor looks at that, have no fears, they have a new town board, new town everything, and they're already looking at some zoning stuff, so, because that's a little strange, I thought it was state law, sixty-two days. At any rate, so, thank you, we hope to see you January 3rd, in the meantime...
We'll see you January 3rd.
Happy, happy, merry, merry.
Happy holiday, happy new year, see you all.
See you next year.
Thank you, appreciate everything.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request, this is for a standby generator located at Seventeen Fuller Avenue, as everyone by now knows, this is in a scenic area statewide, statewide significance, it is not visible from either one of the historic sites directly, nor from the river itself, and we had the recommendation from Ms. Moss, anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Veeth?
Okay, Mary Ann Torres, Seventeen Fuller Lane, Resolution 2023-74, whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Mary Ann Torres to install a standby generator on an existing single-family home, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department December 9th, 2023, and in the building permit application dated November 21st, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions, motion carries unanimously, next item on the agenda is to approve consultant contracts for 2024, resolution to appoint Nelson Pope and Vaurus LLC as planning consultants for 2024, resolution number 23-D, December 20th, 2023, whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Nelson Pope and Vaurus LLC for the year 2024.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Veeth is abstaining because he, because he can't, you're not technically, you're...
Wow.
Yes, he's not reappointed yet, but I know you will be, but at any rate, so all of you just recuse yourself, or abstain, I should say, from. Next one is resolution to appoint Rodenhausen Shaw-Palidoro as legal consultants for 2024, resolution 23-D, December 1st, December 20th, 2023, whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes that the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Rodenhausen Shaw-Palidoro for the year 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions. Next resolution is 23-F, to appoint, reappoint Gordon and Svenson LLP as alternate legal consultants for 2024, whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives, oh.
Nope. Other way, other way.
Sorry about that, now for, wait, now for there be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Gordon and Svenson LLP for the year 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion, besides my idiocy? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions, thank you, I don't know why, I thought that turning the other way would be the right way to do it. Resolution 23-G, resolution to, to appoint Renia Engineering as planning and engineering consultants for 2024, whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Renia Engineering for the year 2024.
Second.
As part of discussion, I will just point out that we've worked with their planner before.
Yep.
Mr. Sander, and if, for some reason, you have to recuse yourself, that's who we would use now, would be, which would be funny and interesting to have someone who's an enthusiastic enthusiast with us.
Matter, there may, there's probably gonna be somebody else, because Bonnie's, you know, planner, so Peter, we would probably, no, Rich, Rich would have an engineer come in my place.
Yes, but I said, if we needed a different planner, it might be Peter. Peter Sanders is an engineer, as we all discovered earlier, which.
I didn't know he was a planner. I thought he was an engineer.
Nope, we, I asked him, I said, you know, because no offense to all the wonderful engineers, including my passed-away dad now, but engineers don't tend to, don't usually tend to have that kind of enthusiasm when they speak to us, so. Just think it'd be interesting to see that happen. And just to point out, now that Peter's moving on to Rania Engineering, when Camp Victory Lake comes back for future site plans, Peter will have to recuse himself, so we'll have an alternate engineering firm. Right. And maybe, you have engineers, so maybe that would be your firm at that point. So it's up to the board at the time. At any rate, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions, motion carries, and may I get a motion to adjourn?
No, no, wait, don't adjourn. HVEA, HVEA contracts.
Oh, it's not there, it's not here. Right, it's not here. It's not, but you might have it in your.
Hang on, hang on.
It should be the next.
Ah.
Sorry.
There you go.
It's eight.
Good catch.
Thank you. Resolution 23-H, December 20, 2023. Resolution to reappoint Hudson Valley Engineering Associates PC as traffic engineering consultants for 2024. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage HVEA PC for the year 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Enase your abstentions. Well, one abstention, one, not here, one abstained as well. Otherwise, now may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you to the town board this year, and, actually, and to the incoming town board to continue to provide resources for the planning board and ZBA meetings to be shown on television. And thank you, Tony.
Yes, thank you, Tony. And can I say, the sound was good tonight. The sound was excellent tonight.
I could hear everything, Tony.
I know.
We can't figure out why sometimes we.
Because they took these out, maybe.
Things have changed, things have changed up here.
Oh, already, okay, thank you.
It was great.